Glad to be back.
I bet.
Good morning. Welcome to Wednesday, September 27th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
I, Sheriff Waymeyer.
President.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the indication. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the top of the Constitution, in which it is called "religion and justice for all."
Matthew, Chapter 5, Verse 3, "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven." Those pray. Lord, thank you for these leaders that you've given for this community, and we pray that these leaders would lead from a place of humility of spirit, humility of heart, charity towards the citizens and the members of our community, Lord, as well as wisdom given by you. We are thankful to have leadership, Lord, and we pray that as you help them, would you bring your wisdom? Would you bring your knowledge? Would you bring the things they need to this meeting and to their daily comings and goings? We praise you. We bless you. We ask for your presence. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Few pieces of correspondence and organizational business. We're going to start with Over the Road Gang. Good morning.
I'm Larry Barber. I am the president of Over the Road Gang Car Club here in Ottawa. We just had our 36th Annual Old Mare's River Run, and we wanted to come out and give you guys a plaque for your guys' appreciation for helping with the car show at this Franklin County Visitor Center. We'd like to thank the commissioners for helping us put this car show on, the Franklin County Sheriff's Department, Franklin County Ambulance Service, Franklin County Emergency Management. I'm sure there's others with the county, but we appreciate your guys' support, and hopefully we can do this again next year in use of visitor center. And like I said, we wanted to give that appreciation plaque to the visitor center. Don, is there anything I'm missing?
No.
Don's in the club with me, so we've worked really hard on this car show that we just put on. As you mentioned earlier, we had a lot of feedback from different ones, but we've had our city meeting with the police department and those yesterday. A few changes we're going to try to make for better for the car show. But other than that, like I just wanted to come and thank you guys and give you guys your plaque.
I know you said at the city, when you met with the city, that you don't have a lot of people in your club, so you were doing this with...
We are 32 members, and out of 32 members, I'm going to go and say there's probably 12 to 14 that actually volunteer to put the car show on. We have a lot of support from Ottawa's FFA, Central Lakes FFA, Ottawa University. Wherever we can get volunteers out, we usually try to get them. So we had a lot of volunteers come in from out of town for the police departments, sheriff's departments, so.
Might mention that what it takes to become a member, if they would like to win the meeting.
Yeah, if anybody wants to become a member, we'll have a meeting October the 5th at 7:00 at the Gopert Center. It's just an application you fill out, just has your name, address, phone number, and why you want to be in the car club. You don't have to have a classic car or even interested in cars. If you're just wanting to volunteer your time, we don't turn too many people away.
Awesome. Well, I did say last week that, like, Brian Sokot, the city manager, this is his first, he had no idea.
Yeah. Yeah, the city manager was very impressed with our car show.
Yeah.
But it takes a lot to put the car show on. It takes a lot of support. It takes a lot of the police department, the sheriff's department, and a lot of those guys downtown to make it run smoothly. So I told everybody at our ending meeting of the car show, it's not just one person putting this on, it's everybody. And I consider everybody as a family. I mean, it takes everybody to do this. It's not an easy task. It takes a whole year to plan this thing.
I know you're not going to go through the list of what it cost to put it on, but I was even amazed the other night. What does it cost them just to rent the porta potties?
So through Madden Rental was just a little over $7,000 just to rent the porta pots. Another $20,000 in T-shirts that we buy and sell at the show. The appreciation plaques, those were a little over $1,600 for the appreciation plaques. Our club is basically funded on just whatever we get for donations. A lot of footwork, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, you know, golf cart rentals. I think our golf cart rentals was a little over $4,000. And of course, you got to figure out, we're probably close to $70,000 before we even put the car show on, that we're out.
Well, we appreciate it. The businesses and restaurants appreciate it. Our TG, yeah.
Yeah.
Fund appreciates it, and I think the whole county, the whole city enjoys
Yeah.
what you put on. So appreciate your hard work.
That being said, that's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you guys again, and we'll do this next year.
Thank you.
We hope you will. Awesome. All right. We're going to move on. We have a report from the Ottawa Main Street Association, giving some updates, and request Sarah Stoffer. Stoffer? Stoffer?
Good morning. I am Sarah Stoffer. I'm currently the interim director for Ottawa Main Street Association. I'll give you a little rundown on the organization. We have been in a rebuild phase. With that, about last August, I guess it's been a year ago in August, I came back on board. In doing that, we rebuilt the whole board. There was no longer a board. The city had stopped funding. It is a national program as well as a state-funded program or state-accreditedated program. In staying in accreditation, it qualifies us for different grants, loans. We have an IWW loan process that's innocent of what walls that we can offer businesses. If we are not in good standing, we cannot keep those accreditations. Part of our accreditations is having a functioning board. We now have a 10-member board with three ex-officios, and all of our committees have chairs. We have four committees. We have organization, design, promotions, business enhancement. Our biggest things are just getting people to support local or downtown businesses. We're really trying to build Ottawa as a go-to community for people to come to. We use your guys' courthouse lawn. That was great for us, great access. We thank you for that. We had a little over 350 attend that event at the courthouse, and it was simply just a, we called it Main Street Madness, family event. Our goal when we're building this is trying to incorporate more partnerships in the community. Because the board had been pretty much in rebuilding, we only have funding, we've been operating solely on the funding from the city. We actually had to go back and request that. It wasn't even being funded through the city for a year or so. With that as well, we are membership-based, and no memberships were being kicked out or asked for. So we took that this past year to really rebuild, and we didn't feel it was right to start asking, hey, pay your dues when, you know, we were really just in a prove-it phase. So in July, we rolled out our new tiers, and we are now taking dues. We currently have 33 members. We're working on getting those out there. Part of us staying in our accreditation is we have to do quarterly trainings. So I go wherever the quarterly training is. For example, our upcoming one is in October and is actually in correspondence with the Tourism Conference. In the past, Main Street has gotten a discount for attending the remainder of the Tourism Conference. However, they're not giving a discount this year. I will be out there for the Main Street portion of it, and at this time, I don't believe there's anybody from the community that's going to be representing Franklin County in the Tourism Conference. So I'm coming and asking if I could, we could be allotted TGT funds to allow me to attend the rest of the Tourism Conference, and the hotel stays out there.
Sarah, what is the amount roughly that you're seeing?
So the Tourism Conference itself is $275, and the hotel is $139 a night, so it would equal $553. And the rest of it that I would be there for Main Street, my, our board would pick up.
Is this the last? This is just for one?
Yeah, just for myself.
How many are there?
How many that go?
No, how many? So you say you have to go quarterly, so...
So I do four a year at least, but they're all covered through, like, my board covers all those expenses.
This is the only one that's a tourism one?
This is the only one that, and I'm not sure why, last year they teamed one up with Tourism as well, and I personally was not at that one. So I do think they try and team one up with Tourism each year, but I don't know if that'll be the same next year or not. A lot of times in ours, trainings, it's a grant opportunity example, or letting us know kind of what's coming down the pipeline, or different things like that. We are actively going after as many grants as we can.
This is something that we would potentially send Christina to, but Christina's on extended leave right now, and so that's not something we're going to be able to do this year. I believe that Sarah would be willing to work with Christina to start promoting tourism in tandem, Main Street and Franklin County. So I certainly don't have any issue with this because we're not going to be able to send anyone. So if she would like to go bring that knowledge back, work with us on future partnerships, I think that's great. So I have no concern, but certainly would defer to the five of you.
I would also like to say that that's exactly what's my thought when I was sitting in training, and we were told about this last time, is I felt like it was a perfect opportunity to form partnership, even if it was somebody from the county. That's actually how this started, is I reached out and said, hey, is anybody from the county going? Could we be in communication together and even meet up while we're there, travel there together, that kind of thing? But building the partnerships going forward, there's a lot that we can offer each other, I feel like. There's even, we've recently been granted through the state a, I don't know if you guys have heard of the program called Placer. It's kind of a, it's a data software, but it collects data. I can tell you that, I'm still waiting on the reports, but I can tell you that last year, from 1st through 5th, there was just under 15,000 people on Main Street for car show weekend. I can tell you, different data collecting and stuff like that, and it's all a free software that we're allowed to use and then share onto the community.
I think it's a great idea to, I mean, you want to make it a destination. We get people here for certain events, but then the rest of the year, what do we do? And I know that there is money available out there for tourism, and we kind of leave it on the table because we don't know what to ask for. So the more eyes that we have, the more ears that we have. I think it's a great use of our funds, but what do you all think?
Thankfully, in the circumstances where we don't have, I mean, I, well, maybe we'd add second thought that Christina was able to and go, but this is somebody, we need some kind of representation.
Yeah, just to reiterate, it's a one-time deal, just this year. It's not a recurring funding.
Cool. Okay. Well, I don't need a motion. I can approve of that, so I will take your, this as approval, and feel free.
I appreciate it, and I will, give me your dare so once I get back from the conference, because usually when I come back from them, it's, you're on brain overload, but I'll give a report back on what I hear. So I appreciate it.
Just keeping track of the cities through their meetings, and I know that Main Street is really with your rough patch there, but I really feel like they're probably, and it's probably a good position that they've been in for a while, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's, once again, a volunteer committee, and if anybody's looking for a place to volunteer, reach out to me.
Lots of places to volunteer. All right. Thank you. All right, then. We have some lovely young people in our audience, because we are going to proclaim, designate October 1st to the 7th as National 4H Week. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you all can come on up, absolutely, come on up. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then if you guys have some comments, and then we'll take a picture. All right. Proclamation reads, "Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country; and whereas 4H has helped 267 youth in Franklin County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders; and whereas 4H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing through hands-on projects in important areas of health, science, agriculture, and civic engagement; and whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to do and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Franklin County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them; and whereas 4H's network of nearly 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4H members, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designate October 1st through the 7th, 2023, as National 4H Week throughout Franklin County, and encourages all of our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact they have made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. Signed this 27th day of September, 2023." And you are, Josie Thompson. All right.
Hi, my name is Josie Thompson. I'm the 4H Program Manager for Franklin County. Actually, October 1st will be my one year of being here in Franklin County. This is a, 4H has been a great opportunity for me and has showed me many different life skills that I have been able to use now. And today with me, I have my Franklin County 4H council officers, and they're each going to talk to you about why they are in 4H.
Oh, awesome.
I'm Bryn Perry. I am the vice president of the county council. 4H has been a really big impact on my life ever since I was little. My older sister was in 4H since I can remember, so it's had a big impact on my leadership skills, and I've made so many lifelong friendships throughout 4H and met so many new people throughout the state, and had plenty of time to converse with adults and get to learn so many leadership skills, like whether that's working with young kids or kids my age and even adults as well. So what kind of questions do you guys have for me about my 4H?
What is your area of photography?
So I do a lot of different projects. I do everything from showing livestock, so I show meat goats, to foods and nutrition. I took some yeast rolls to State Fair this year. And then I love my leadership projects. It's like one of my favorite things to do. Turn this bossy little girl into a good leader, so.
That's awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Calla Higbee. This is my ninth year in 4H, and I am a member of the Appnews Trailblazers 4H Club, where I currently serve as the president. I'm also the secretary of the Franklin County 4H Council. So a little bit about me, my family raises a commercial cowcalf operation consisting of Seminole and Zemangus cattle. My siblings and I also own and operate a 30 sow show pig operation where we raise and sell show pigs. As you probably could have guessed, I'm very heavily involved in 4H as I show livestock all around the country. Cattle and pigs are what I show. As animal agriculture is one of my biggest passions, 4H has been one of the main foundations in my life. It's taught me hard work, dedication, and it's taught me how to step outside of my comfort zone, and it's told me that failure's never final, and that success can be achieved through determination and hard work. The 4H motto is to make the best better, and that's exactly what 4H does. It takes, it makes servant leaders much like yourselves and gives them a heart for the community. You have any questions?
What are you going to go to college for?
I'm going to go to college to livestock judge.
Oh, you're doing that at KU, aren't you?
Yeah, we know where you're going. Awesome. Thank you.
So hi, I'm Erin Livingston. I am currently serving as the 4H Council President, and I'm also one of the two 2023-2024 Miss 4Hs. I am currently in the Rambling Rangers 4H Club, and I've been in 4H for the past 11 years. Just one of those things, 4H has been always just a good foundation for me. I've been in it since I was seven years old and could start in 4H. I've done any project that can be from photography, cooking, sewing, to showing horses, doing bucket calves, anything like that. But one thing I just love about 4H is I think a lot of people think 4H is just about agriculture and the animals, and it's so much more than that. It's so much more to the indoor projects, and like the other ones we're saying, is the leadership. Especially being Miss 4H this past year, it's been able to teach me all these different leadership opportunities of being able to make connections with younger kids in our community and things like that, and also teaching me these leadership skills to even be able to come up here and talk with you guys today and go into other workplace zones and be able to go into interviews and confidently say, I know what I'm doing, I know what I'm talking about, and not have those nerves and everything like that. So 4H has been a really good foundation for me, helping me with my FFA, helping me with my future plans and everything like that. So it's so much more than just the ribbons. Everyone always thinks that you need to go and you don't need to win everything, but 4H has taught me that it's so much more than that. It's not all about the ribbons. It's not all about the placings, but it's about the connections that you make, and I can say that my 4H friends are forever, and they're always the type of people that you can always fall back on. So it's just taught me that it's not all about the winning. It's about helping other people and building each other up and learning how to work with things you have, and I just, it's always been what I've got to fall back on.
Public speaking, is that one of your?
Yeah, it's something that it's really helped me with. I've done, it helped me a lot, especially when it came to FFA. I've gone to 4H County Club Days and things like that and done public speak talking, and then also at FFA competitions. It really helped me to be able to just come out and talk and speak my voice and learn how to do it confidently, just because as a seven-year-old, I can sit here and say that if I was seven years old seeing myself right now, I'd be honestly in shock because I was the little kid that would always hide behind my mom, didn't want to talk to anybody. So it really helped me come out of my shell to be able to do this.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Where did the Miss 4H bring, take you?
So with the Miss 4H, we were able to participate and be kind of like the leaders when it came to the county fair, and then just doing other activities and things. But it really gave us the opportunity to connect more with a lot of the younger kids, because I'd say as an older 4H'er, you don't always get those opportunities to really get that one-on-one time with the younger kids, and you really realize how much they look up to you. I got to help judge with the cloverbuds, the little kids that aren't old enough to be in 4H, and you get to sit down with them, and we're the ones that interview them. So I got to ask them questions about their project and things like that, and it just really made that connection there, so then they know that they're not alone, because when you're six or seven or five even years old, they're nervous, and they don't want to go to talk to somebody, but you get to be that person that they're comfortable talking to, and it's just starting that foundation, just like I had, and I had people to talk to and look up to. It's able to start that foundation for them, too.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Winger, and I'm also a Miss 4H for this year, and I'm the president of our 4H Club, and I'm the reporter on council. This is going to be my 11th year in 4H, I think, and I raise Semetole, Hereford, and Angus cattle. We started out with Angus and Herefords, and then we've branched into the Semetole breed this year, well, last year, and we've really loved it. And so that's one thing that I've learned from 4H is just like trying new things. Growing up, it was just always Angus and Herefords, and then this year, we were like, let's try, or last year, sorry, we were like, let's try Semetoles. And part of why we love the Semetole Association and the breed is the people, and that's why I think 4H really brings to you is the people that are in 4H, and just gain to know them and connecting with them and building those relationships. And as Miss 4H, I feel like that's something I've really gone to experience this year. I've had a lot of younger members come up to me and ask me for advice with their project, and ask me just for help and things like that, and that's something I really cherish, because as a really young member, I remember looking up to those older members, looking up to the president of our club, and the Miss 4H, and Mr. 4H, and those things, and just really seeing them as role models and being, seeing those as people that like I really want to be when I'm older. And at the fair, there was this young lady who was struggling to keep her animal, is like just acting up, his skin a little crazy, and so I went and helped her, and that was just really cool for me, because we built a big connection through that, and that's something that happened to me when I was seven or eight years old. I had an animal that we brought it to the fair, had been great all year long, and then it just went crazy. And so I had to have Miss 4H help me that year, too. And so seeing that full circle, seeing something that I experienced gain to be that for somebody else has really been super cool for me, and it's just helped me grow as a leader and learn more about the industry as a whole, because I only raise cattle, and so that is my main project and my focus on. But from my friends and from the other people in my club and the other people throughout the county, I learn more about the sheep and the pig and the goats and all the other industries, while also getting to learn about what they do and the projects they're involved in and things like that.
Who can tell me how many 4H clubs there are in Franklin County?
I think there's like 12. 12.
12?
Yep, 12.
Oh, wow. I wouldn't, I had no idea.
Yes, there's a lot.
How many people up here have ever been in 4H? Anybody? I knew there'd probably be at least two, a couple.
And I'm not the balls to announce them here.
Yeah, well, I didn't even know if they had 4H back then, but I would just throw it out there.
There was 3H when Dawn was in it. Tell us what the 4H is stand for.
Head, Heart, Hands, and Help.
There you go.
I was saying, it's a count when you have your kids in it, and you have to go through it with them.
I was going to say, you haven't been in it, but you cook a, yeah, you allot for them now, so that's awesome. I love to see women in leadership, obviously, you can see that. Girls don't ever quit, you know? It's people like you that we need to be up here someday. I, you know, you are actually becoming great leaders, so don't ever quit. Does you want to share? Go ahead.
I just want to introduce myself, too. I'm Jessica Flori. I'm the 4H Youth Development Agent for Fratir Extension District, excuse me, which is Franklin Anderson in Osage County. So we were able to bring Josie on board last year to be in our office as the boots-on-the-ground person for our 4H program here in the county, but we service everybody in those three counties. So thank you so much for your support, and, you know, there's some really tough challenges facing our youth today, and I hope you guys see 4H as a program that can help tackle some of those challenges. So thank you so much for your time this morning. And one thing I love about my job is I've seen these girls grow from seven years old all the way to these outstanding young ladies that they are today. So I love my job and the 4H program. Thank you so much for your support.
Okay, we are all going to make our way down. Taking a picture. Oh, we need y'all in the picture. Wait just a second, guys. She's going to take one more. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments today?
No.
All right. Consent agenda. I was like, we haven't done the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, we got the, uh, payroll approval in the amount of $1,366,670.62. Minutes from the study session on September 18th and minutes from the meeting on September 20th. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Obstand except for the one on the payroll.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And then we are, have only one item of business today. One, it is to authorize the community corrections to modify the former juvenile services building. We did get to take a tour last Monday. That was awesome. We did get to take a tour last Monday, that was awesome.
Well, thank you commissioners and good morning. As you had mentioned, last week we toured the juvenile services building and I highlighted some potential renovations that we would like to make in order to house community corrections there full-time. And so this morning, we are asking for authorization to go ahead with those modifications and I provided a, an estimate of some, of the cost of those renovations and I'm happy to answer questions on those and go over those in detail as much as you would like.
One thing I would point out is, is card readers. We have to be determined on that. We, so we've got an estimate and it's for five or six.
Six card readers on three doors, correct?
Six card readers on three doors. It's like 40,000 bucks. So I told him, we've got to find a different solution. I think some of it is that our system over there is proprietary and it's outdated and should have never been implemented in the first place in all likelihood. But to have readers that fit that, it's gonna be pricey. So I know Dustin and I both are hoping that we don't have to resort to that, but we pulled that just because we're gonna continue to explore options. We will come back again. Maybe that will be the solution, but regardless, we'll come back again for that, so.
One of the things we talked about, we kind of talked about maybe what the estimates were, but we didn't really talk about where that funding was going to come from.
Yeah, it can come from capital outlay, it can come from Janet, forgive me, I don't have the name, one of our two big reserve funds, it can come from there.
I'd probably recommend that it come from one of our reserve funds and we are already spending quite a lot of money out of our capital outlay fund this year for the software project and some other things. So I'd probably recommend that it comes out of one of our two major capital outlay funds, which are reserve funds.
Is there any money left in ARPAP fund?
I believe that there is, yes, but we would need to do an accounting of that and certainly we still have, as you all know, some outstanding requests that wouldn't include this, but, but these are the types of projects that we have reserve funds for. So I don't have heartburn at all about, I mean, 29,000 a day and it'll be more than that, but it's not anything we can't do. So the, the motion, if you elect to make it, would be not only to modify the building, but to occupy it as well, to go ahead and give him and his staff permission to occupy the building.
Okay, if there aren't any more questions, an affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to authorize community corrections to modify the former juvenile services building.
So move.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you commissioners.
Dustin, I, I appreciate your work on this, I appreciate your flexibility. I, I remember hiring you and it's interesting, when we hire folks, you have a job description and at the time, it did not include anything about a juvenile detention center, juvenile services and you have taken to it and you've done it incredibly well. And I know we're all excited about, I guess I'm reluctant to speak for the commissioners, I believe they are excited about this transition and looking forward to making it happen, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, we're going to staff reports. Anything else, Chair?
Yeah, I do have a few things. Was in Wellsville, would have been last Friday, that ambulance station is looking good. It's going up fast. I know Joanna and Christie have been out there, have got great pictures of it, she's working on a story that will post all over, really excited about that. We had a discussion recently about the Public Works yard and where we left that was we were gonna start potentially having discussions with the city, with the fair board about acquiring land. I've made the decision to halt that for now. I want to explore further what that side out by the landfill looks like. I mean, there, there's no doubt it would be more expensive, but when you look at it over 10, 15, 20 years, what's better for the future growth of the city of Ottawa, it's at least something that, that I want to diligently explore. I certainly will give Dave the opportunity to speak, but I believe he feels the same way. There are a lot of just innate restrictions with our current site things that just can't be changed, whereas if it were feasible to design a brand-new site and find a way to pay for it over time, then we at least want to explore that possibility. And I'll use that as a segue to talk about the bipartisan infrastructure law. Got a meeting next week with Bean and a woman that the state has hired to help walk organizations through all of this. I intend to really delve into that over the next year. I don't know whether or not we could swing using some of those funds for something like that, but I'm certain that we could use some of it to do Old 50. And if we were able to get some of that money, then the Old 50 money, we could potentially reallocate. There's a lot of money out there right now and I could see us potentially getting some of that for this project. So I just, I say all of that to say, I don't want to jump right into something and move quickly when, I mean, this is something that, you know, could reshape parts of the community, so I want to give it its, its due diligence. Any questions about any of that?
It's just kind of scary. I just saw that Lenaxa just is putting $74 million into an enforcement center and I thought, wow, and we did an ambulance station for half a million, you know, like, I know there's, it takes a lot of money, but I also know that you are very diligent with our money and so you aren't gonna put us into anything that we're gonna regret, so.
Well, yeah, you all will make the decision to do it, certainly. We're just doing due diligence right now.
Glad you're chasing other opportunities and if we are fortunate enough to free that much, that money up, uh, it may seem like a windfall, but I don't know, I just always get scared people put their spending hats on, uh, just bridges alone. It's only one small aspect of what we do, but we have over 200 bridges and if we replace two a year, which we don't, that would make the average bridge eventually 125 years old, so.
Well, and, and if you take yourself back to 2019 or even February of 2020, that this notion that there would be, what is it now, billions of dollars worth of stimulus money that was coming down the pipe in the subsequent years, we couldn't have anticipated that and we have no idea what the next few years are gonna look like. So I just wanna, it's why we don't move super fast unless we absolutely have to, because you never know what opportunity's right around the corner. I think that's all I have, Ian, thank you.
All right. Sheriff, do you have anything this morning?
Good morning. I've shared with you guys before some of our staff development, professional development that we do with our supervisors. A big chunk of what our leadership development is there is through the FBI. They have a three-tier system for, for supervisors and then managers and executive. And then there's a couple things above that and I know that he loves it when I get up here and talk about him, but last week, under Sheriff Laswell, attended the Central State's Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar through the FBI. It's a week-long executive development course and it's a, it's a high-level training and it's, he'd been through a lot of the, this topics that are there, obviously, once you get to a certain level, a lot of those, there's a lot of similarities in those trainings, but it, there were some new, new ideas for him and then also some refresher on some of the things that he had learned at, at other things, but those are, I think that those are important that, that we develop our staff and that, that doesn't stop and, but I wanted to commend under Sheriff Laswell for what, for his dedication to, to doing that and that's how, a way that we lead by example is that we go to, we go to the training ourselves that we're trying to send people to. So, but I'm, I'm proud of our staff and proud of what Kyle was able to accomplish and get that done last week, so I'm sure he doesn't want to come up, but anyway.
Want to lead the group in a slow clap?
Yeah. Is that the reason? We can. Yeah, he just, I, I don't know. He's passed every time I've offered for him to come up and speak on our behalf. Anyway, that's all I have unless you guys have questions for, for me.
I might miss something. Sorry, never messing it to the car show, but they reported to the rest of the club that their meetings with the county, city, law enforcement and emergency management was the best year they've ever had for communication and the, the people out here in the public don't know the extent that the city, the county goes to, to, to prepare and to be ready for, we hope never happens, issues, but, but I know they, the president and the vice-president reported back to us after the meeting, this is one of the best years they've ever meet, met with everybody and, and worked with them and then working with us, making it safe for them, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Also, on that, just so that you, you are aware, the, the lengths that we, that we go to, our staff doesn't get, that we block off a time that they don't get to, to take vacation time, they can't, you know, skip town on car show weekend because we know that it's gonna take a lot of resources. As was mentioned, we, there's a lot of outside, a lot of agencies from outside of our county that come into work and it does not sit right with us for us to call and ask for help from other people while we're sending all of our people away. So we, we do, we pull, basically pull all of our resources together for it. I would agree, we had a, we had a really good planning year this year and some of the changes and things that we've, that we've talked with the club about implementing for next year, that communication is already going well on that as well, so.
I think I saw six, six bicycles, law enforcement out, or seven, six or seven, but anyway, I was like, yeah, there's gotta be outside agencies that are here, so that's.
So, yeah, we had, we had a good turnout, we get very good support for that, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
IT have anything this morning? Well, I didn't know, I didn't want to say Dustin because I didn't want you both to be like, deer in the headlights, so.
So I promised you a couple weeks ago, I'd come and give a staff report on our county-wide software project and we have reached another milestone, the end of this last week on that and have completed the majority of the go-lives for the financial management or the core financial management platform. So Janet and I, yesterday with Betsy, kind of started testing out our training processes because that's not something that we typically do for any of our departments is working on training, so we kind of went over to David's office and worked with Kelly of, of how we thought that she kind of work, look, got her working in the system and started doing things, she's gonna provide some feedback so we can fine-tune that. And next week, we're hoping to get out to the rest of the departments to start working on the first phase of training of how they're gonna interact with that system. This first wave is primarily the processing piece, that is getting their invoices from their departments, to get paid, then we'll come back and work how they're gonna take money in and receive that in, then once all that's flowing well, we'll come back out and work with more of the management side and the reporting and different things like that of digging into those. But we really did reach a significant milestone in completing these go-lives. One more go-live with the core financials and that's gonna be payroll, that, we're going to do that at the end of October and then we will be fully on the ERP Pro product. I think you'll see, we're gonna be developing a lot through this over the next several months or even year or two. I think we're gonna have to review a lot of what our processes are, we've made some decisions that we think is best for now, but as we start getting going and get feedback from other departments of what they like, what they don't like, we really have to evaluate this frequently. We did also start a conversation with our vendor of, we want to start scheduling this time every two to three years with them of what type of things can we do now? We've got our hands around this, how can we change this or what new things is there to not let this fall behind and become outdated for us? We get updates and things like that, but we want to attack it from our processing standpoint and what can we do differently? So again, this one is just about wrapped up, hopefully in the next month or so, we are fully on the system, using all the functions with that. There are some new functions that we have not had and Janet and I, because I think her phrase has been, we're drinking from the water hose right now, we're not pushing too heavily on that, that would be our project accounting, we're excited about what we've seen from that, but we are not working on, it's there and it's ready for us, we're not working on trying to roll it out to everybody yet. Contracts management, grants management, those things are there, we're not quite ready. It's a feature we have not really used and we're going to get there, but we want to take care of those things right now that every department is using today, which is getting the bills in, getting them paid. I issued the first purchase order from the system last night and got that sent out to a vendor, so we are live, we are using it, so that was the main point of this. One thing that I think Janet kind of hit on a couple weeks ago was talking about some people's involvement in this and she highlighted Marilyn Stevenson down at the treasurer's office and I don't want to take away from what Marilyn's done, she's done a terrific job, but what hasn't, I don't think, been relayed is the people behind Marilyn and the people behind me and the people behind Janet. You've heard about the three of us really stepping in on this, but you haven't heard about how Nikki Adella stepped in on Bankrec and really kind of taken over that charge since she's responsible for it and her participation in that. You didn't hear about Beth Lewis stepping in whenever Marilyn was out for a period of time and continuing these meetings in her place. You haven't heard about what Betsy's done in Janet's office, keeping those daily functions running, or Adam, I have essentially not been in my office for the last week and Adam by himself has kept my office running. So I want to make sure the commission understands what these other staff people are doing while the three of us have been out as a face of this project. So still want to thank the commission for the support of this project, it's been great, but we're excited about where we're going.
Well, and we're gonna have to, to continue to communicate and ask for grace because everything you just described and you did so, that was fantastic, it's gonna be that way for a couple of years. I mean, we're gonna have to communicate with the public that there are, from time to time, gonna be service interruptions as we kind of make this segue. But I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic based on where we're at now, that it's gonna be a good transition. You all have done great. Janet, I know you've explained this, but just for the commission and/or the public, you talk about invoices and training, can you explain, just 30,000 feet, how we do invoicing now versus what the software is gonna allow us to do?
So currently, all the department heads send their invoices down to my office and Debbie, who will be retiring at the end of the week, the week, will be leaving, so it, I, I, although I don't want to lose Debbie, it's actually perfect timing that we're transitioning to this new system so everybody can learn a new process, well, we'll, we'll be without Debbie and learning the process too. But Debbie processes everyone's invoices from all the departments and she has to know all the vendors and she knows all the accounts. No one, everyone knows kind of their own little, little bubble and they don't know it very extensively, they don't know about all the vendors at all because Debbie handles all of the vendors and it's, it's a big job for my office. Betsy handles it when Debbie's gone. It is a huge job to get the check run processed. So now, we're gonna be pushing that out to the departments for them to manage their own things and it's going to give those departments so much more information. When we were training Kelly yesterday, she was very excited about being able to process all these things on her own, choose her vendors right there, get everything into the accounts that, that she has and then being able to see that immediate feedback, being able to click on those vendors and see, oh, I have these other outstanding payables, oh, we've had these other payables in the previous month and being able to make sure that she doesn't send an invoice twice because that's something that Debbie and Betsy look at all the time, they're looking back to make sure that we're not paying invoices multiple times, like if something's crossed in the mail or something. Everybody's gonna take ownership of them, this themselves and it's gonna be a learning process for everybody, but we're really excited about it. And when we talked to Kelly about it yesterday, Kelly was very excited about it and Dustin talked about the project accounting just briefly and we just hit the, probably the 100,000th view for Kelly yesterday, but what we did share with Kelly yesterday, she was really excited about that for reporting for our projects, especially the Old 50 project, which we already set up in there as our first project in the system and we really have in the system, and we really haven't even got to all the details of that and how we're gonna be able to use that to get feedback, but it's a lot of, a lot more reporting that we're gonna be able to bring to you guys. We really haven't felt like, in the past, that we've had reports that we could bring to you guys quarterly and really show, like, what we're spending, what we're bringing in revenue-wise, and that's something we're really excited that we're gonna be able to do. And where Derek said, and Dustin alluded to, that we're going to be growing in this. We're kind of looking at these first three months, September, October, November, as like really getting our feet wet in this, starting in January, when we're a whole year, we're gonna be starting a brand-new whole year on the system. We're really excited what that looks like for us and what we can, what we can bring to you guys, what the, what the public can see, what it's gonna bring, so. Lots more information.
The last thing I would say, and bear with me, I would just be remiss if I didn't, and this is kudos to Dustin, to Janet, to Marilyn. So the vendor we are using, Tyler, it's a progressive vendor. There is another vendor out there that most other organizations have been using that none of them are happy with, that would have been a safety net. I mean, Janet could have said at any point, I want to use this vendor, because that's what the other clerks use, and it would have been easier. There's more, but it wouldn't have been better. I mean, this, this vendor is growing. They are going to allow us to do so much more. There are counties, like Johnson and Douglas, correct, primarily use Tyler. I believe, just like with the radio system, more and more counties will start transitioning to Tyler, but we are very much on the front edge of that, and that takes courage, and courage is hard. And so appreciate Dustin and Janet and Marilyn and everyone else, Amy and Christina, that's been involved in this, because that's, it's what we describe ourselves as, is we want to be progressive, we want to be leaders, and this is a great example of that in action, so really proud of that group.
Dustin and I both have had other counties reach out to us and request that. Just last week, I had another county send me an email and say, hey, I heard you guys were doing something different. We're going through a transition, and we're looking at something different. What are you doing? Can you send us your contact points? So, I mean, more than just like, what are you doing? They're asking us for our contact points, and they're wanting to see what we're doing. And there is another county that is on the financial management, which we just transitioned to. They're looking at this project past our financial management, because they're interested in the tax portion of it, because they don't currently have the tax portion, so they want to see how that transition goes, and we're gonna be moving towards that next year. We'll be going live with that in about the June timeframe, so just, we're kind of building on all these things, as Dustin said, you know, so we're not diving in all at once, although we are diving in all at once, but we're moving each piece on at a different time.
We get to see little bits and pieces of it, and it's exciting, it really is, where we're going.
I think, I think once we get to next summer, whenever we're fully implemented on all these, there's still gonna be a lot of transition that we have and learning to do, but in that May-June timeframe is when our last piece should be live and we should be on board. I think at that point, or hopefully within about six months from that point, we can step back and get that thirty-thousand-foot view of all these different pieces. Because I didn't mention it today, because we've covered enough times, we've done Pub Works for David's area, we've done Field Appraisal for Jamie's area, we've done Fiddler for Vicky's area. Now we've just completed Financial Management. We've still got the permitting and licensing coming up in the first quarter of '24, and then we've got the assessment and tax collection piece coming. So I think once those are all done, and we're hopefully able to take a breath and settle in a little bit, we can take a step back and look at all this that we've just completed over the last couple of years, and really start seeing the direction and what these are doing for us, and the reports that we're able to go ahead and do through a budget cycle and see how these trends are actually happening a little bit more easily than what we've been able to do, and start getting those rewards, which is what we talked to you guys about when we first presented this, was the efficiencies that we're going to gain, and all these new capabilities that we could have in budget prep and all these functions, and I'm looking forward to that day more than where we're currently at. But anyway, I wanted to give you guys an update. I'll stand for any questions, and just thank the Commission for their continued support on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna, do you have anything this morning? All right. Dustin, do you have anything else? All right, we'll move on to David Lee, Public Works.
They've said it a couple of times here, but Kelly really is excited. She left that training, ready to go, and she's already using the software, so really excited about that. The property out by the landfill, we've already started taking a look at, really just trying to sketch some things out, but at some point, we'll have something that we might be able to present and really talk about. And then the last thing that I've got, we received the quotes for the end dump trucks, that we were soliciting quotes from several vendors. Still asking some clarifying questions on some of that, but I'm really, really happy with at least one of the prices that we've gotten, and hope to bring that to you. Probably on October 11th, I'll be at a conference next week, but we'll come with you, with a recommendation on how to proceed with that, so.
I know that when we discussed that, we were talking about four, but then we thought about the possibility of breaking it up and doing two, which is still very much on the table, but if what David believes is accurate, and I believe it is, that's what he's clarifying on price, it may be such that we want to look at three or four, because...
Don't want to pass an opportunity just to stick with the plan?
Exactly right.
Yeah, it could turn out to be a significant savings.
Yep.
So.
How did that work, Walt?
Yeah. In this case, it happens to be about timing, and us piggybacking on a, on a much larger order and realizing those savings.
Public Works out.
Yes.
Looks like the chip seal project's about done with a big strike.
Yeah, so the chip seal project is completely done. Painting finished up yesterday. I believe it was yesterday or the day before, but they are done. I've driven, oh, about half of it, and it looks, the paint is mostly good. There's a couple of spots that I think could have been done a little better, but overall, I'm really happy with the entire project.
And you're, I'm kind of thinking about you, like Dustin, he didn't know he was gonna get into the juvenile, you didn't know you were gonna get into possibly a whole new project over there, but you're the right person for it, I think, because you are the, you are the numbers person. You are the one that can put this together if it does happen.
Yeah, and, you know, the things that, you know, the landfill area, it makes a lot of sense if we're really thinking really long-term to analyze that. It's worth going through that exercise to get, getting rough cost estimates and having a general plan in place. I don't think that the type of construction that we would consider is quite what, I think it was Lenexa or someplace that you mentioned. We're not talking those kind of facilities, but certainly something that will suit our needs for generations to come is kind of what we're looking at. The software that they mentioned, you know, I do like numbers. I'd like to take a deep dive. Kelly has spent a lot of time crawling around in old boxes, looking for receipts and this and that, that I need to be able to put information together. Super excited to have that information eventually at my fingertips. Anytime I want, I can call that up through the new software. So all of those things are exciting to me. The BIL, certainly, if there is an avenue for us to leverage those dollars, it makes sense to look at that hard. KDOT, the state, has recently done some things that make that, you know, not an impossibility for a county like ours, so Derek taking a look at that, I think, is wonderful, and if it pays off, it'll pay off in a big way, so definitely, all of these things are really exciting to be a part of.
Janet?
Just one quick addition. I just want to let you guys know that Debbie's retirement gathering will be on Friday from two to four in the clerk's office, so just invite you guys to stop by and celebrate Debbie's 20 years with us, and wish her well in her retirement.
Commissioner Reports, Don.
I'll be attending Wellsville meeting tonight. I was up to Kansas City Tuesday, so I stopped by the ambulance, and they're installing the heating and cooling. It's coming along quick. The red doors are in, windows are in, the doors are in, the heating and cooling's going in, so they've got it to the point now, rain or shine, they're gonna be working, you know, so I think it's gonna move along really quick. It's amazing that to go in there, and there's a lot of room in that building. I mean, you know, it's amazing that, you know, to get it up now, and how much room there's really gonna be. I think it's a real future-type building, you know. We're not gonna, once we're done, I think none of us are ever gonna have to, unless it's a remodel or something somewhere down, and I don't even see that. You know, I think it's something we're gonna have for the rest of our time, you know. Also, my report on the housing project is going like crazy, too. Things over there, there was a three-story, and they're moving along, and they're getting ready to put in the, back in there, so that's moving pretty good, too, so. That's all I got.
I said one thing, I think we are, we're contacting about the Veterans War Memorial, the Franklin County Honors. People want to redo the shrubs and maybe put flowers or something around there, and I don't know if anybody had any problem with that. They want to redo it and make it all nicer.
I, yeah, I think, I thank you for bringing that up, because that's something that should have been. Basically, they just want to plant some flowers, and they don't want to have to come and ask permission every time they want to plant flowers, but if they do anything else, they'll come before, so we can let them know that that's fine before the...
We probably need to orchestrate that through Brandon, so that he knows when folks... But I'm happy to talk to him about it.
Okay, that's all I have.
I need to pick up our time with.
I only had a couple of meetings last week. Both of them had a program by Spark, we all, that used to be the community and schools program, and when you talk about it takes a village, that's part of our village, because they really are stepping up for kids that might slip through the cracks. They're not necessarily gonna end up on our juvenile detention system, but, you know, they're kids that need a little bit more support than they might get at home, or just need that extra little support, so it was a good program. A couple of, at the FCDC meeting, that you might put on your calendar, the quarterly meeting, business meeting, is going to be at the Wellsville High School in October, and then the annual meeting is going to be back at Ottawa High School, I believe, sometime in November. I don't have the dates, but just kind of put those in your head, that if you are interested in attending, that would be something to look forward to. And otherwise, I don't think we have anything else to come before the Commission, so entertain.
Like it.
All right, all right.